Thank you very much.
I'm here for Karen.
Well, good evening. Good evening, everyone. It is seven o'clock PM. This is a meeting of the Whitehall City Council on June 1st, 2021. So we'll call to order, and if you would, please join me for a moment of silence followed by the pledge of allegiance. Thank you.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Ms. Dodd, would you please call the roll?
Bailey?
Present.
Rodriguez?
Present.
Elmore?
Present.
Conneson?
Present.
Cantor?
Heck?
Present.
Morrison?
Present.
President Potter. Mr. President?
Yes.
I'd like to move to excuse the absent members of the council.
I have a motion by councilperson Elmore and a second by councilperson Heck to excuse the absent members. Ms. Dodd, would you please call the roll?
Bailey?
Yes.
Rodriguez?
Yes.
Elmore? Yes. Conneson?
Yes.
Heck?
Yes.
The absent members have been excused. Mrs. Dodd has submitted to each of us a copy of the minutes from May 18th, 2021, Agenda Regular Meeting Minutes. I'm sure we've all had a chance to review those, and I will take a motion to approve those minutes.
Mr. President, I'd like to make a motion to approve the minutes.
Second.
I have a motion by councilperson Conneson and a second by councilperson Morrison to approve the May 18th Agenda Regular Meeting Minutes. Ms. Dodd, would you please call the roll?
Bailey?
Yes.
Rodriguez?
Yes.
Elmore? Yes. Conneson?
Yes.
Heck?
Yes.
Morrison?
Yes.
Minutes have been approved. We have no poll public have been filed with the council office since the last meeting. That brings us to our standing committee reports. And first we'll have Administration and Financial Management. Chairperson Rodriguez.
Thank you, Mr. President. Administration and Financial Management met vice-cause. Minutes are on file. There's a number of resolutions and notices on the agenda this evening. They will be here next Tuesday sometime after 6:30.
Thank you. Community and Elder Advocacy, chairperson Elmore.
Thank you, Mr. President. Community and Elder Advocacy will meet on Tuesday. Our minutes are on file. We have no draft or pending legislation, and we will meet again on next Tuesday about 6:30. Thank you.
Thank you. Community Standards and Enforcement, chairperson Rodriguez.
Thank you, Mr. President. Community Standards and Enforcement also met vice-cause. Minutes are on file, and we'll be here next Tuesday sometime after 6:30.
Thank you, sir. Economic Development, chairperson Morrison.
Thank you, Mr. President. Economic Development also met last Tuesday. We have two pieces of legislation, 39 and 40, 2021, up for consideration this evening, as well as public hearing on both.
Very well. Thank you. Infrastructure Maintenance and Services, chairperson Heck.
Thank you, Mr. President. Infrastructure Maintenance and Services met last Tuesday. We have no drafts or pending legislation. Our minutes are on file. We will meet again this coming Tuesday after 6:30.
Thank you. Public Safety, chairperson Conneson.
Thank you, Mr. President. Public Safety also met last Tuesday. Our minutes are on file. We'll meet again on Tuesdays sometime after 6:30.
And doing double duty, Parks and Recreation?
I like that.
Chairperson Conneson.
Absolutely. Parks and Rec also met last Tuesday. Their minutes are on file, and we'll meet again on Tuesdays sometime probably well past 6:30.
Thank you, Karen. That brings us to the officials' reports, and I think we'll start tonight with City Attorney Michael Pittens. Michael?
Thank you, Mr. President. Members of council, before I begin, it looks like councilmember Heck and I, we went out to the Market on the Green, and I think they had a double dose of allergy. I'm feeling it too. I'm feeling the pain right now. But from the city attorney's office, the official report for the month of May, we prosecuted 220 cases in our mayor's court as well as municipal court. Thirty-two of those were of Whitehall residents, so that's about 14 percent. That being said, one thing that kind of struck me, and I was thinking of if I was going to say anything about this tonight, and I'm up here, so I might as well. I learned about the Tulsa Race Massacre back when I was in the seventh grade, and I had the fortune to have a history teacher that taught the whole amount of history. And I remember in the seventh grade not understanding anything about it, but I also remember in the years that went beyond that, not ever there ever being a national recognition in the way that I've seen this year as it relates to that massacre. And that being said, on this day, I sat and I saw President Biden do a speech, him being the first president to ever visit the site and visit the location. And in one of his lines, he said that hate does not go away, it only hides. And I thought to myself, wow, on this night, coming to council where council gets the opportunity to vote on Resolution 10, 2021, I would just ask for favorable consideration from this council as it relates to Resolution 10, 2021. It shows courage. It shows empathy. It shows understanding. It shows that this community is a community that will not stand for hate, will not stand for intimidation, will not stand for the things that have disparate impact on marginalized communities. And so I just ask this council to have the courage to vote favorably for Resolution 10, 2021. Thank you.
Thank you, Mike. And we are a good example of diversity. With us tonight is city auditor Dan Miller.
Thank you, Mr. President. Just wanted to report that we filed a CAFR to the state of Ohio on Friday concerning the upcoming tax budget. I do have two copies of the budget on file in the lobby, so that anybody who wants to come in can look at it. Thank you.
Thanks, Dan. Our Director of Development and Public Service, Mr. Woodruff.
Thank you, Mr. President. I have no official report. Didn't want to just counsel I provided you all with an updated site plan and some elevations for the project at Maplewood in Maine. I know it still says Hudson Care's here, but I think the working name that they're going to be going with is the Enclave on Main as well. And I know that they are not here, so I wanted to provide some kudos to our Parks Department for a great event this afternoon, or this evening, rather, with the Market on the Green, the First Farmers' Market. There were hundreds of people there, a good variety of different vendors, things for all kinds of people of all ages and family groups to be able to do. And I know a lot of planning went into that, so I just wanted to congratulate our Parks Department on a wonderful event. And whether, other, outside of the allergies, the weather could not have been better. So just wanted to pass that along.
There was a small piece also on the news about it today. There was a lady on there that was talking about crime in other communities and how we need to show more of a presence like this in all the communities. And so they were using Whitehall as an example, a good example of what to do to make sure that we bring the community together.
Yeah, I think one of the, you know, amongst other tragedies of the past 12 months have been that the Whitehall Park Department and their leadership have not been able to do that community gathering that they really excel at in 2019. And 2020 sure put a damper on that. So I'm really excited, like all of you, to be able to be able to partake in a lot of their community events and community building that they really become really good at. So I certainly can appreciate that notion right there, Karen.
Very good. The following officials' reports have been filed in the council office since the last meeting. The Treasurer's Investment Report for April 2021, Treasurer's Activity by Fund Report for April 2021, the Treasurer's Fund Reconciliation Report for April 2021. Under Communications, Petitions, and Claims, Notice for any Ohio Divisional Liquor Control for the State Keeping TREX Transfer of the C2, comma, C2X Liquor Permit for Woods Market LLC, 15 Commerce Street, Lockborn, Ohio 43137, to the Whitehall Market LLC, DBA Walters, IGA 573 South Yearling Road, Whitehall, Ohio 43213. The minutes for the May 6th, 2021 Planning Commission Meeting and the agenda for the June 3rd, 2021 Planning Commission Meeting. That brings us to our public hearings for this evening, and the first one is Ordinance Number 39, 2021, Amending the Zoning Map Attached to the Chapter 1122 of the 1970 Codified Ordinances of the City of Whitehall and as subsequently amended, allowing a special permit under 1123.10C1 to allow a drive-through window and/or drive-through facility on the property located at 3596-3648 East Main Street, Parcel 090-00548, property owned by Whitehall Retail Ventures, LTD. This time, I'll open the public hearing on the Ordinance 39, 2021. Are there any proponents for Ordinance 39, 2021? If there are, state your name and address for the record.
Hello, my name is John Earl. I'm the architect on the project for Cap'n E's, and my address is 99 Middleworth Country Club Estates in Baltimore, Missouri. And I'll make a brief here. We were here about three weeks ago or so for Planning Commission, and we passed that in the state at that time. Prior to that, we had worked heavily with Zach on moving forth, on getting a certain plan that worked for the kind of interconnectivity and pedestrian-friendly kind of influence that you guys are interested in for your city. And then about two years ago, we were actually here prior to that, and that was right before COVID did, of course. And at that time, we didn't really know if past week was going to do well through COVID or if it was going to totally bust. So that, our project got put on hold at that time, and we've kind of since retooled and come back with a different proposition for this particular site. Previously, we had a 44-seat Cap'n E's restaurant that during the beginning of COVID, you know, they shut down the dining rooms, and that became a proposition that nobody wanted to be a part of. So we've since flipped this to our different prototype that we have kind of in other places around the United States here. And we now do a drive-through only with a patio exterior seating. So that's what this facility is going to end up being proposed, much like a checkered or rallies would do. So anyways, with that being said, utilizing kind of some influence from Zach, like I said earlier, we were able to pull that building much more forward to Main Street there and have a direct connection right to the actual patio, to the sidewalk. So, you know, from a pedestrian's, from a standpoint, we'll have tables and chairs right up in front of Main Street there with connectivity to the sidewalk, which we were kind of excited about here. And then we were able to get a 10-car stack on the site, which is good for kind of that honeymoon opening period. We feel like we'll be satisfied looking in there. And then we have plenty of parking as well, shared parking with the existing block to the shopping center there. So anyway, that's kind of in large what we're doing. If you happen to answer any of your questions, if you have any.
Is this a franchise site?
It is. This will be a franchisee, not a corporate site. They're semi-local to the area here. They're, I think they're small, probably 30 minutes away from here. I'm not exactly sure where their home base is, but they're relatively close to the region here.
And what's the projected opening for this?
We're ready to go. So as soon as we get a shovel in here, we're ready.
So what's the bill about that?
I'm sorry?
Once you break ground with us?
Probably just opening, probably four months, I'd say at the most. Yeah. It'll be relatively quick. It's a small building. It's only about 960 square feet. So it's not a large structure, but the site is probably the most, you know, intensive portion of the job.
Is that it? Very good. Thanks, Dan.
Very good. Thank you so much.
Yep. Are there any other proponents for this ordinance? Are there any opponents or folks who wish to speak against Ordinance 39, 2021? Hearing nothing. You don't have any that were sent in to you into the council office, do you?
No, sir.
Okay. Hearing nothing further, I will close the public hearing on 39, Ordinance 39, 2021. That brings us to the second public hearing. It's Ordinance 40, 2021, Amending the Zoning Map Attached to Chapter 1122 of the 1970 Codified Ordinances of the City of Whitehall, Ohio, and as subsequently amended, allowing a special permit under 1123.10C1 to allow a drive-through window and/or drive-through facility on the property located at 890 South Hamilton Road, Parcel 09000052, property owned by Great Eastern Owner, LTD. So I will open the public hearing on Ordinance 40, 2021. And this time, we'll ask if there are any proponents for Ordinance 40, 2021. Please step forward and state your name and address for the record, please.
My name is Matt Dickin with Crime Engineers on behalf of the Financial Credit Union, or our office address is 394 Oak Street, Columbus. So, yeah, we are proposing limiting tent parkin' spaces in the Great Eastern Shopping Center at the corner of Wright and Southampton Road to install a drive-up interactive teller machine with an enclosure by, the ITM will be facing Southampton Road and sit on an island that would route customers' vehicles out in path of shopping center traffic into a protected lane for queuing. This is actually an experimental unit for Kemba. This will be the first one of its type that they're deploying, and this will be the first in a line of an upcoming expansion over the course of the next five years, where they're hoping to add more of these machines to expand, expand access for members and perhaps attract new members. So the enclosure mockup can hopefully be, I'll review your packet. The enclosure markups in your mockup is in your packet, and it's going to closely resemble an actual Kemba branch with the brick facade and the green tower. And then, again, this project is, in my opinion, relatively straightforward. The commissioners during the Planning Commission review did have some questions that I wasn't able to answer to my own satisfaction, so I wanted to quickly go over the answers I tracked down with you in case there's any confusion. So the first one was how many of these locations were already in the central half area. And as I said before, this will be the first of hopefully many. Then, there was a question about what time of day it'll be serviced. I said something goofy about being serviced after hours, which thinking about that doesn't make sense at all because what car company would operate it? I mean, that doesn't make sense. It would be during the day, and it would, it should take only about 15 minutes to service. As well, that's one point of the enclosure. The enclosure of the ITM, you can fully enter it, so then any work and loading of the machine will be out of public view, so as not to keep a low profile in that way. And then, there was one more question about the lighting on site. I said that we weren't proposing any lighting. That was incorrect. We are showing two, adding two light holes, and the concern was about how the light was going to be throwing, and we're going to mature the downward route, so it's not going to be dazzled by drivers on South Hamilton Street while still providing plenty of light for added security in that area, since currently it is kind of off any dead quote-unquote corner of the parking lot as it is now. So thank you for your consideration. I'll take any other questions if you all have any.
The curb cut off of Hamilton, where you access off of Hamilton and the Kroger, how far south is this entry to your TS here from that curb cut?
That is a good question. We are about 40 feet, 40, 40, 50 feet south of, so that corner of South Hamilton and Wright Avenue. Wright Avenue technically dead ends into South Hamilton there, but it continues into the parking lot in practice. So yes, we are, we are, here we have four parking spaces plus two islands, so we're about 50 to 60 feet there before the turn into our staffing lane starts.
Okay. So these are called an ITM. What is the difference between an ATM and an ITM?
Good question. So an ITM actually has a video component to it where the user can, if they want, they, so they, you can, it performs all functions a normal ATM does, and if the user requests it, they can get a connection to a teller in what is essentially a call center, and then the ITM can actually perform more functions with the aid of the remote teller than a normal ITM can. It can perform, they can perform, delete every banking function other than traveler's checks and, because those are some custom, and a few others. And that's, so that's the interactive part of the ITM, of the ATM.
What kind of services? Maybe you don't bank enough.
So what, man, I haven't been to an ATM in years. What does a normal ATM do?
I just gave you money.
You can, you can, it dispenses cash. You can also, you can also deposit checks. I don't believe there's too much functionality on cashing checks. So with, at least in that respect, I believe the ITMs, you can submit a check. It can be examined in real time by the teller, and I believe you can get a, they can get a check fully cashed as opposed to the partial or whatever ATMs currently do. I know you can't fully cash a check at an ATM at this time. So you can open new accounts and things, I believe, too, and move money around and things like that. Again, most of what you can do with a normal teller minus getting custom documents given, or maybe it's dispensary to you, because the ATM is impossible, isn't, doesn't have the ability to print those things.
Okay.
Anything else? Thank you. Are there any other proponents for Ordinance 40, 2021? Are there any opponents or folks who wish to speak against Ordinance 40, 2021? And we have nothing submitted to council's office.
No, sir.
Okay. If there's nothing further, I will close the public hearing on Ordinance 40, 2021. Ms. Dodd, would you call the roll on whether each member of council was given a copy of each item of legislation listed on the agenda prior to the meeting and including any add-on legislation?
Bailey?
Yes.
Rodriguez?
Yes.
Elmore?
Yes.
Conneson?
Yes.
Heck?
Yes.
Morrison?
Yes.
That brings us to our third reading items tonight. First, we have Ordinance 39, 2021, Amending the Zoning Map Attached to Chapter 1122 of the 1970 Codified Ordinances of the City of Whitehall, Ohio, and as subsequently amended, allowing a special permit under 1123.10C1 to allow a drive-through window and/or drive-through facility on the property located at 3596-3648 East Main Street, Parcel 090-00548, property owned by Whitehall Retail Ventures, LTD.
Mr. President, I wish to introduce Ordinance 39, 2021 and move for its adoption.
Second.
I have a motion by councilperson Morrison and a second by councilperson Elmore for the introduction and adoption of Ordinance 39, 2021. Any questions, comments? Ms. Dodd, would you please call the roll?
Bailey?
Yes.
Rodriguez?
Yes.
Elmore?
Yes.
Conneson?
Yes.
Heck?
Yes.
Morrison?
Yes.
Ordinance 39, 2021 has been adopted. Ordinance Number 40, 2021, Amending the Zoning Map Attached to Chapter 1122 of the 1970 Codified Ordinances of the City of Whitehall, Ohio, and as subsequently amended, allowing a special permit under 1123.10C1 to allow a drive-through window and/or drive-through facility on the property located at 890 South Hamilton Road, Parcel 090-000052, property owned by Great Eastern Owner, LTD.
Mr. President, I wish to introduce Ordinance 40, 2021 and move for its adoption.
Second.
I have a motion by councilperson Morrison and a second by councilperson Elmore for introduction and adoption of Ordinance 40, 2021. Any comments, questions? Ms. Dodd, would you please call the roll?
Bailey?
Abstain.
Rodriguez?
Yes.
Elmore?
Yes.
Conneson?
Yes.
Heck?
Yes.
Morrison?
Yes.
Ordinance 40, 2021 has been adopted.
To extend the conference for 15 minutes, press one.
That brings us to Resolution 10, 2021, and it's approving a resolution of and by the City of Whitehall condemning intimidation and violence, reaffirming equality under the law, and committing to reviving civility between all people.
Mr. President, I wish to introduce Resolution 10, 2021 and move for its adoption. Second.
I have a motion for introduction and adoption of Ordinance 10, 2021 from councilperson Elmore and a second from councilperson Heck. Ms. Dodd, would you please call the roll?
Bailey?
Yes.
Rodriguez?
Yes.
Elmore?
Yes.
Conneson?
Yes.
Heck?
Yes.
Morrison?
Abstain.
Resolution 10, 2021 has been adopted. That's all we have under third reading this evening. That brings us to our second reading items. Ordinance Number 43, 2021, making a fund transfer in an amount of $46,241.64 from the bond retirement account 101-950-57500 to the debt service fund 401 and declaring an emergency.
Mr. President, I'd like to, with regards to Ordinance 43, 2021, I can name that as Res.
Second.
I have a motion by Mrs. Rodriguez and a second by Mr. Morrison for the amendment of Ordinance 43, 2021 to reflect on the record that it will be amended as read tonight. Any comments or questions? Ms. Dodd, would you please call the roll?
Bailey?
Yes.
Rodriguez?
Yes.
Elmore?
Yes.
Conneson?
Yes.
Heck?
Yes.
Morrison?
Yes.
Ordinance 43, 2021 has been amended. Ordinance forty-three twenty twenty-one has been amended. Ordinance forty-six twenty twenty-one, it's amending the zoning map attached to chapter one-one-two-two of the nineteen-seventy codified ordinances of the city of Whitehall, Ohio, and as subsequently amended, changing the zoning on property located on thirty-five-forty East Main Street and seventy, seven-hundred-thirty-nine and seven-hundred-twenty-one Maplewood Avenue, parcel number zero-nine-zero-dash-zero-zero-two-one-two-two and zero-nine-zero-zero-zero-one-eight-nine-zero, zero-nine-zero-dash-zero-zero-eight-two-four-zero from R three Residential District and General Commerce District, GCD, to A two Apartment District, property owned by MAMA Company Incorporated. This ordinance forty-six twenty twenty-one is being read by title only, and there is a public hearing scheduled for June fifteenth, twenty twenty-one. Ordinance forty-eight twenty twenty-one, amending the zoning map attached to chapter one-one-two-two of the nineteen-seventy codified ordinances of the city of Whitehall, Ohio, and as subsequently amended following the special permit under one-one-two-three-point-zero-six-C-seven to allow an apartment dwelling structure containing more than twelve dwelling units on the property located on thirty-five-forty East Main Street and seven-thirty-nine and seven-twenty-one Maplewood Avenue, parcel numbers zero-nine-zero-dash-zero-zero-two-one-two-two, property owned by MAMA Company Incorporated. I hope I'm saying that right.
Mr. President?
Yes.
Two things. One, I promise to never have you have to read that many parcels in a row. Secondly, both of the, both forty-six and forty-eight, I just for the record, are referred to planning commission, and they'll have their hearing for those on Thursday at six-thirty.
This Thursday?
Yes, sir.
What is that date?
June the third.
Okay. Mr. President, I think you forgot the zero. You might have to reread those.
I will do that, just. So, ordinance forty-six, the public hearing, or will be in front of planning commission the third.
Forty-six and forty-eight have their planning commission hearing on this Thursday, June third, and then again, they'll have their public hearing and their reading on the fifteen years of the council. Yes, sir, I just wanted to make sure the public is aware of the, the planning commission meeting on Thursday.
Great, thank you. Nonetheless, ordinance forty-eight twenty twenty-one is being read by title only, and as we mentioned, the public hearing is scheduled for June fifteenth, twenty twenty-one. And that is all of the second readings for tonight. Under first reading, we have ordinance forty-nine twenty twenty-one, authorizing the exemption of one-six-one-point-zero-nine-A vacation and sick leave credit carryover for the purpose of employing a highly qualified employee to the city of Whitehall and declaring an emergency.
Mr. President, I'd like to introduce ordinance forty-nine twenty twenty-one and move for the suspension of all rules.
Second.
I have a motion by Mr. Rodriguez and a second by Mr. Morrison for introduction and suspension of the rules on ordinance forty-nine twenty twenty-one. Any questions or comments? Mrs. Aug, would you please call the roll?
Bailey?
Yes.
Rodriguez?
Yes.
Elmore?
Yes.
Conneson?
Yes.
Heck?
Yes.
Morrison?
Yes.
The rules have been suspended on ordinance forty-nine twenty twenty-one.
Thank you, Mr. President, move to adopt.
Second.
I have a motion by Mr. Rodriguez and a second by Mr. Morrison for the adoption of ordinance forty-nine twenty twenty-one. Ms. Aug, would you please call the roll?
Bailey?
Yes.
Rodriguez?
Yes.
Elmore?
Yes.
Conneson?
Yes.
Heck?
Yes.
Morrison?
Yes.
Ordinance forty-nine twenty twenty-one has been adopted. Ordinance fifty twenty twenty-one, approving and making a supplemental appropriation of eighty-seven thousand dollars from unappropriate monies in the municipal fiber project fund three-twenty to the municipal fiber project expense account, three-two-zero-dot-zero-zero-dot-five-zero-zero-zero-zero, declaring an emergency.
Mr. President, I'd like to introduce ordinance fifty twenty twenty-one, move for the suspension of all rules.
Second.
I have a motion by Mr. Rodriguez and a second by Mrs. Conneson for introduction and suspension of rules on ordinance fifty twenty twenty-one. Any comments, members, questions, anything? Ms. Aug, would you please call the roll?
Bailey?
Yes.
Rodriguez?
Yes.
Elmore?
Yes.
Conneson?
Yes.
Heck?
Yes.
Morrison?
Yes.
The rules have been suspended on ordinance fifty twenty twenty-one.
Thank you, Mr. President, move to adopt.
Second.
I have a motion by Mr. Rodriguez and a second by Mrs. Conneson to adopt ordinance fifty twenty twenty-one. Ms. Aug, would you please call the roll?
Bailey?
Yes.
Rodriguez?
Yes.
Elmore?
Yes.
Conneson?
Yes.
Heck?
Yes.
Morrison?
Yes.
Ordinance fifty twenty twenty-one has been adopted. Ordinance fifty-one twenty twenty-one, making a fund transfer in the amount of sixty-five thousand two hundred forty-seven dollars and ninety-six cents from the bond retirement account one-zero-one-dash-nine-five-zero-dash-five-seven-five-zero-zero to the debt service fund four oh one and declaring emergency.
Mr. President, I'd like to introduce ordinance fifty-one twenty twenty-one, move for the suspension of all rules.
Second.
I have a motion by Mr. Rodriguez and a second by Mr. Morrison for introduction and suspension of rules on ordinance fifty-one twenty twenty-one. Any comments? Ms. Aug, would you please call the roll?
Bailey?
Yes.
Rodriguez?
Yes.
Elmore?
Yes.
Conneson?
Yes.
Heck?
Yes.
Morrison?
Yes.
The rules have been suspended on ordinance fifty-one twenty twenty-one.
Thank you, Mr. President, move to adopt.
Second.
I have a motion by Mr. Rodriguez and a second by Mr. Morrison for the adoption of ordinance fifty-one twenty twenty-one. Ms. Aug, would you please call the roll?
Bailey?
Yes.
Rodriguez?
Yes.
Elmore?
Yes.
Conneson?
Yes.
Heck?
Yes.
Morrison?
Yes.
Ordinance fifty-one twenty twenty-one has been adopted. Ordinance fifty-two twenty twenty-one, approving and making a supplemental appropriation of thirty-eight thousand eight hundred ninety-six dollars and sixty-two cents from unappropriate monies in Law Enforcement Trust Fund two forty-one to the Law Enforcement Trust Account two forty-one-dash-zero-zero-zero-dash-five-zero-zero-zero-zero and declaring emergency.
Mr. President, I'd like to introduce ordinance fifty-two twenty twenty-one and move for the suspension of all rules.
Second.
I have a motion by Councilperson Conneson and a second by Councilperson Heck for introduction and suspension of rules on ordinance fifty-two twenty twenty-one. Any comments? Ms. Aug, would you please call the roll?
Bailey?
Yes.
Rodriguez?
Yes.
Elmore?
Yes.
Conneson?
Yes.
Heck?
Yes.
Morrison?
Yes.
The rules have been suspended on ordinance fifty-two twenty twenty-one.
Thank you, Mr. President, move to adopt.
Second.
I have a motion by Councilperson Conneson and a second by Councilperson Heck for the adoption of ordinance fifty-two twenty twenty-one. Ms. Aug, would you please call the roll?
Bailey?
Yes.
Rodriguez?
Yes.
Elmore?
Yes.
Conneson?
Yes.
Heck?
Yes.
Morrison?
Yes.
Ordinance fifty-two twenty twenty-one has been adopted. Ordinance fifty-three twenty twenty-one, approving and making a supplemental appropriation of eighty thousand dollars from unappropriate monies in Law Enforcement Trust Fund two forty-one to the Law Enforcement Trust set-aside account two four one-dash-zero-zero-zero-dash-five-one-zero-zero-zero and declaring an emergency.
Mr. President, I'd like to introduce ordinance fifty-three twenty twenty-one and move for the suspension of all rules.
Second.
I have a motion by Councilperson Conneson and a second by Councilperson Heck for introduction and suspension of rules on ordinance fifty-three twenty twenty-one. Any discussion on this ordinance? Mrs. Aug, would you please call the roll?
Bailey?
Yes.
Rodriguez?
Yes.
Elmore?
Yes.
Conneson?
Yes.
Heck?
Yes.
Morrison?
Yes.
The rules have been suspended on ordinance fifty-three twenty twenty-one.
Thank you, Mr. President, move to adopt.
Second.
I have a motion by Councilperson Conneson and a second by Councilperson Heck for the adoption of ordinance fifty-three twenty twenty-one. Mrs. Aug, would you please call the roll?
Bailey?
Yes.
Rodriguez?
Yes.
Elmore?
Yes.
Conneson?
Yes.
Heck?
Yes.
Morrison?
Yes.
Ordinance fifty-three twenty twenty-one has been adopted. That brings us to resolution fourteen twenty twenty-one, adopting the tax budget for the city of Whitehall, Ohio for the fiscal year beginning January first, twenty twenty-two, and submitting same to the county auditor. Resolution fourteen twenty twenty-one is being read by title only. Resolution fifteen twenty twenty-one, resolving to approve then enough certificates and declaring emergency.
Mr. President, I'd like to, this resolution fifteen twenty twenty-one, move for the suspension of all rules.
Second.
I have a motion by Councilperson Rodriguez and a second by Councilperson Morrison for introduction and suspension of the rules on resolution fifteen twenty twenty-one. Any comments? Mrs. Aug, would you please call the roll?
Bailey?
Yes.
Rodriguez?
Yes.
Elmore?
Yes.
Conneson?
Yes.
Heck?
Yes.
Morrison?
Yes.
Rules have been suspended on resolution fifteen twenty twenty-one.
Thank you, Mr. President, move to adopt.
Second.
I have a motion by Councilperson Rodriguez and a second by Councilperson Morrison for the adoption of resolution fifteen twenty twenty-one. Ms. Aug, would you please call the roll?
Bailey?
Yes.
Rodriguez?
Yes.
Elmore?
Yes.
Conneson?
Yes.
Heck?
Yes.
Morrison?
Yes.
I lost my place. I guess resolution fifteen twenty twenty-one has been adopted. That brings us to our second poll public. There have been no poll public filed in the council office since the last meeting. Community date board.
July, you had something. Yeah, I have. You okay?
Yeah.
Okay. Tuesday, June eighth, from ten to one, there are vaccinations at Whitehall Library, which is forty-four forty-five, it's Broad Street. Also, on June the fourth, Friday, Fun Friday, Fun Day, Market on the Green Star today, which is Kudos Tour, Wexley Park, and beginning June fifteenth, which is Tuesdays and Wednesdays from twelve to eight, Mobile Health Clinic is available and the services are free. You can look that information up for more details on our website.
I was just gonna say, the family in the park, was I heard you say?
And that was, the movie with Sandlot?
Yeah, the movie is Sandlot, and there's the bank plans, too.
Sounds like fun.
And the food truck festival has been scheduled for the thirty-first.
July first, yes.
Yeah.
And there is a Independence Day parade on July third at ten o'clock.
And fireworks.
July second. I think that's eight to ten. The viewing party?
I think so.
Yes. Laurie, do you have anything?
I would be, I would be enjoying the food truck festival.
Yes, sir.
School is out for Whitehall City Schools. Starting June seventh, they'll be doing meals at Beechwood from June seventh to July thirty. Oh, July thirty, not thirty, July fifteenth, correctly. What month is this? I know, right? There'll be free meals.
That it. Brings us to poll council. We'll start tonight with Mr. Rodriguez.
Thank you, Mr. President. Glad to see the farmers market started out very well this evening. Glad to hear that the food truck festival's back on schedule. Let's move in the right direction. Other than that, thank everyone who's watching this evening. Next week's meeting will be our first public, open to public meeting, I believe.
Yes.
And that's all I have. Thank you.
Come on, come on.
I'll wait till you finish. That brings us to Councilperson Elmore.
Thank you, Mr. President. Thank you for everyone who has viewed and also for open public meeting. Let me just say, Attorney Vivins, you are very fortunate. I didn't hear about the Tulsa massacre till maybe a month ago, but today marks the hundred year since the race massacre occurred, and it's the first time in U.S. history that private planes dropped bombs on U.S. citizens. I know we talk about history of Black history beginning in February, but as I stated before, it is history. And also, I, we put forth resolution after resolution. We passed three resolutions condemning racism, violence, intimidation. Fortunately and unfortunately for some, we cannot bury pain and drama. We cannot ignore it. A narrow view of Black history negates history. It's difficult to have courageous conversations because we all have, have to come to terms with the impact, its effects, and the harm it's caused all of us. There is an inner struggle all of us go through, and as we discover, what is buried will always surface. So, I pray unity. The ability to have courageous conversations, no matter how painful, is the only way that we can unite as a people, and I'm thankful to be a part of passing resolution ten twenty twenty-one, because at the end of the day, we are more alike than we are different. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thanks, Laurie. Brings us to Chairperson Conneson, I'm sorry, Councilperson Conneson.
You can call me whatever you'd like. Most people do. Thank you for viewing and watching, and happy Pride Month. I know that I will be doing some celebrating with some friends this week.
Councilperson Heck.
Thank you, Mr. President. Thank you, everybody, for tuning in tonight and putting up with me and my, my seasonal allergies. That's really how, thank you, person rec. I did get a chance to go today. It was great to see so many people out at Kelly Green, and it was great to start having our events again. I hope to see many people on Friday.
All right, thanks. Councilperson Morrison.
Thank you, Mr. President. I would also like to thank everyone for watching and hope everyone has a good week. Mr. Vivins, I also agree with your, your statements, and I was fortunate enough in high school to have an American history teacher that was very thorough, and I benefited from him very much. My reasoning for abstaining is not that I disagree, but I just felt that it brought an overall conclusion to the state, to the city of Whitehall that I don't feel applies. And I know there is racism, individual racism, everywhere, every city. racism, everywhere, every city in this country, and that has to be handled and start at home with good conversation, neighbor on neighbor. And so, that's where I'm at, and everybody have a good week. Oh, it, I have to add one more thing. I have a proud grandson that went to second grade this year. Mr. Mays Banks, he's so happy.
That concludes everything we had to do tonight, but I did want to end it without saying that, uh, I want to remind everyone to keep Wes Tanner and his family in your prayers. Uh, we're definitely thinking about him at this time. Uh, with that, I'll take a motion to a chair.
So?
Second.
I have a motion by Mr. Rodriguez and a second by, uh, Councilperson Elmore to adjourn. Ms. Aug, would you please call the roll?
Bailey?
Yes.
Rodriguez?
Yes.
Elmore?
Yes.
Conneson?
Yes.
Heck?
Yes.
Morrison?
Yes.
We are adjourned.